So 7:04 PM on January 4th, let us call the January meeting of the Norberth Planning Commission to order. Thank you all for coming to my place for this meeting and thanks to the public as well. Does everyone have an agenda for the evening? Okay. So first of all, I haven't talked to all of you yet, so Happy New Year. I hope everyone in your world is doing okay. I know all of us have been contacting friends and family and hearing news about COVID and so I hope everyone you know is okay and if not, I hope they will be on the mend. And I appreciate the opportunity to have this meeting online. I think at this point it makes us all more comfortable to be meeting this way. So tonight, the main order of business will be to continue our discussions of the SADO ordinance, which Chloe, I hope you will focus on helping us. I hope you will help us focus on things we need to, to help you move along with your work. And a few last items in regard to the zoning amendments. And at that point in the agenda, I'll update you on where we are in that process. I did speak with the solicitor today about his workflow. So I can report on that at that point. At the moment, the chairs update, we'll start with that would be brief. First of all, congratulations to Councilmember Winston for you finally being sworn in or officially in the council. We welcome you to our meeting in that new capacity. You all may not know this, but when council reorganized last night, it passed an omnibus resolution, or I don't know if it's a resolution or an ordinance regarding appointments to boards and commissions and all of our terms and appointments were reaffirmed. So we can continue as the planning commission and more importantly, the council appointed in that resolution, the Historic Architectural Review Board. We now have one. And I would like to read to you a list of people who were appointed. Carl Dress, architect, I believe Adam, that's a neighbor of yours or someone you know. Graham Copeland, real estate broker. Does anyone know Graham Copeland? Okay. Jen, Jennifer will serve as the planning commission. Wouldn't say representative exactly, but liaison perhaps to the Historic Architectural Review Board. Thank you for volunteering for that. Architectural historian is Kevin Block, who is a really fascinating person. I don't think he lives here now. I think he grew up here and is a architectural historian and literary theorist who teaches at Princeton. But in his specialty is modern architecture. He's written about Vincent Kling. Yeah, historian Dennis Montana. Anybody know Dennis?
Ever heard of him?
I think we do.
Please convey our appreciation to Dennis for stepping into that role.
Great.
Arm twisting.
Recently quoted, recently quoted in the New York Times.
Oh, yeah. I don't read that rag anymore. And then architect James Cornwell. So Jim, you volunteered as well. So thank you for seeing this effort through. We appreciate that very much. And then the building inspector. There's no name associated with that, but the borough intends to appoint someone from Yerkes. I don't think they want to appoint Kevin Walsh. I think they'd rather appoint someone else. But they will be appointing someone who works for Yerkes in a building inspector capacity. So I know nothing more than that. In case you're curious, Jen, your term expires in 2024 and Jim, you have a trial run term of one year, 2022.
I'm almost at the end of my first term.
That's right. You're running for reelection. You should be heavily into fundraising right now, dallying for dollars. But we wish you all good luck and appreciate your efforts carrying our historic district forward. And then in case you didn't tune in last night, Fred Bush was elected to be the president of Pro Council. So I will say one thing about Fred is, and Michelle Pennanopoulos is the vice chair. Fred and Michelle together are probably two of the most detailed oriented council members when it comes to planning commission matters, digging into the fine detail of all of our ordinances and proposals. And so I'm grateful to have someone who is thoroughly engaged in what we do in the leadership of council, not to say Aaron wasn't, but I'm glad that Aaron's successor is someone who is familiar with our work and eager to stay on top of the details. So that's all good news. I hope I'm not putting you in a spot, but Aaron, would you like to say anything? Now that you're elected and official member of council?
I don't really have anything to say. I'm just here to learn because I have a feeling you're going to be sending some proposals our way shortly. So I want to make sure I can interpret them. Well, I think that's one coming, so.
We appreciate that. We know you've been a regular attendee at our meetings and so we appreciate that as well. It's probably a merit badge and in order for you. I don't know what it would be, but thank you. So that is my update. The next item on our agenda is a review of the November and December minutes. I think technically, because we are not meeting at Borough Hall, we can't take any official actions. So what I'm going to ask is if anyone has any comments or corrections they'd like to make. We remember last month I sent out the wrong version of the November minutes. And so this month, hopefully I sent out the right version of the December minutes as well as the the November minutes as well as the December minutes. What I'll ask is if sort of by consensus, you can agree to allow us to post them. And then with any corrections you'd like to make and then next month we can formally approve them. So does anyone have any comments, corrections about the minutes that were submitted? Okay. So is there a consensus then that I can submit these to the Borough Office for posting on the webpage? Sort of a formal, formal adoption? Okay, I will do that. I did not put election of officers on our calendar. Normally we do that in January, but since we're not meeting officially, I don't think it's appropriate to actually take that official action. I will say that Adam has volunteered to be secretary. So I appreciate that that very, very much. And so next month, and I've indicated my willingness to stay on as as chair. And so next month, we can entertain nominations and vote on officers for for 2022. So for this, this month, we'll continue on as we have and Adam, thanks for for agreeing to process our minutes for us, which is a key duty of the of the secretary. Chloe, do you have any MCPC updates aside from the work on the SADO, which we'll be talking about?
No, I don't at this time. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Is there anything else that any members want to make, have questions about sort of organizationally or procedurally or sort of update wise before we move on to our agenda? Okay, so we move on to old business. We'll begin with a discussion of the draft subdivision and land development ordinance. In the past, I guess at the end of November, right before our meeting, we circulated a draft of the processing portion, chapter of the SADO. We did discuss that to some degree at our last meeting. Some of you requested more time to review it so that you can make more careful consideration and suggestions. This month or in December, we also received a draft of the design section of the SADO and a outline of the SADO. So we have a lot on our plate in regard to that right now. Without alternative, Chloe, to kind of help us, help, you can help us navigate what we need to be focusing on and talking about so that you can move this, this work along for the borough.
Thank you. Yes. And Todd is right for sure. We had sent out several different things at different times and I did receive comments back from several of you. I appreciate you taking the time to look at it. I also know it's a lot and this is not your last opportunity. So one thing that comes along with looking at pieces of a, an ordinance is questions about, oh, well, this part, shouldn't this be in this ordinance or this other thing? So I just put together this one page outline memo that just describes the sections as we think they are going to be in the final SADO and what all those sections will have in them. That's not an item that necessarily needs discussion here, but if you're wondering, you know, you've got part three of the SADO to review, how does that fit into the whole picture? I hope you'll be able to refer to that. That said, if anyone has any comments on the outline at this time, I'm happy to hear those.
I don't.
Okay. Great. And I'll just add that as we work through the whole thing, it may be that something comes up that changes that in the end, but that's how we're envisioning this right now as we're working on it. Okay, the plan processing and review, you've seen a few different versions of this and I did receive the most comments from most people on that. There were a couple of things I wanted to bring up that, that, that various people commented on. One was the addition in the preliminary plan review procedure. It names that Montgomery County Planning Commission should review the plan set, the borough engineer, the borough zoning officer. And there's an addition of a landscape architect in that list. And I'll tell you how that came about. Your Borough Shade Tree Commission reviewed this and requested that a landscape architect specifically look at plan proposals. Your borough engineer and I both work with landscape architects and we have the ability to run something by a landscape architect as we're doing our own reviews. But in conversation with borough staff and Michelle, feel free to chime in. Leave your borough manager agreed that having an actual landscape architect letter was something that that she, she was going to add to, wanted to add, go ahead and add to the process at the request of the Shade Tree Commission. That's my understanding there.
Yes, I agree with that. And I believe we decided on Pennonee since we already use them as our engineering firm.
Yes, we had, we have landscape architects. So it would really just be an extension of our reviews.
Yep. So that's what that is doing there. And then this, related to that, a question came up of, right now, the way it is in the draft is that the landscape architect is only mentioned at the preliminary plan phase and not at the final plan phase. The question that would be before us potentially, or perhaps we should ask for other staff members or Shade Tree Commission members input on this is, do you like specifically a landscape architect review letter at the final plan stage as well, or is it captured in the preliminary plan? Anyone has any opinions on that?
Chloe, if I could jump in.
Yes, please.
If I'm following on the correct draft, is this the 1228 version?
I don't think there was a 1228 version of the plan processing. Was there?
No, I think Kevin, you're looking at the
Design Standards.
Design Standards. I think you're referring back to the other section.
Yeah, the, the latest draft of the plan processing and review that was circulated was dated November 30th, I believe.
Okay, I have that. That just seemed too far back. Thank you.
Yeah, I've was, was waiting for comments from several people who told me they had them. So I haven't, plus I haven't circulated anything since. I do have a new draft. After we discuss things tonight, I'll send that up.
Jim Spear, since this is something, an idea that was initiated by the Shade Tree Commission. And thank you, by the way, for joining us and not the Shade Tree Commission tonight.
Yeah.
What, do you have any thoughts about Chloe's question about whether a letter should be requested at the final stage or just the preliminary stage?
Um, well, I think getting a letter is, yeah, I personally think getting a letter as early as possible on landscaping is always a good idea. I couldn't tell you what the consensus of Shade Tree Commission is. I'm sorry. It's just that I don't recall if there was a result of that.
I guess what I, my comment on that would be that usually once something has been, the preliminary plan has been approved, it's most things are resolved fairly satisfactorily till to most parties and it may not be necessary to have, have it reviewed again at the final plan stage. That's why I wrote it in this way without any further direction from anyone, but.
What, what happens if there are changes though? Could we, could we make like changes to plan reviewable again? Or are they bound to the, to the plan they submit at preliminary?
If, if changes are made, they have to clearly indicate them. You know, what exact change in a narrative, what exact changes are made, were made and why. And they do get reviewed. I guess it would be just by the borough engineer though, although again, he can always ask a landscape architect colleague to look at that.
Yeah. I, it just, just jumps to mind. I wonder if there's a list of, of of acceptable changes that, that an applicant could make between preliminary and final stage. Like there are some things. I know on Shade Tree, we would really like to have more native trees, more native plantings. And I wouldn't want to see, you know, an applicant sub in something after the fact, you know, after the review letter that may be considered comparable and, you know, otherwise be considered comparable in girth or height or something like that. You know what I mean? So I, I'm wondering what kind of changes could be made between preliminary and final.
No, Eric, do you want to chime in on that? Can you deal with a lot of those changes as I come through?
Yeah, I mean, so so let's say if a plan comes in during preliminary plan phase, it's going to be reviewed, you know, everyone gets their input, you'll have the, the landscape architect's review letter. Now there's still, then something advanced at the final, they're still bound to comply with the, you know, the review comments of that preliminary plan letter into the final. I mean, I guess if, if really there's a concern, you know, if you're, if we put the landscape architect in the final review as well, then yeah, very well could be that the review letter is, you know, no, no new comments. Yeah. It may not, may not hurt because the answer could be, if they could look through it and there's nothing new and we're done.
Sounds good to me.
I can imagine that comments made in the preliminary stage would need to be, the implementation of those comments, the response to those comments would need to be demonstrated. Landscaping is without, without casting any aspersions is often thought of as window dressing by developers. Oh, okay. We'll plant a tree. And sort of reluctantly complied with. So if we really are serious about, about riding herd on, on the landscape, we should see it at the end. We should see what they've done. And if we're going to have a professional's opinion to guide us, we should have, we should have a response from the professional.
Good.
That's a pretty clear answer.
Sounds good.
What other questions do you have for us?
Todd, you brought up a question of staff certification of a complete application related to the tentative sketch plan. So the preliminary plan and the final plan are required. There's a very specific list of things that must be submitted. And the initial process is that all those are submitted to the borough offices and staff look through the materials and ensure that the, the application is complete. And that's described for the preliminary plan and the final plan. That's not described for the tentative sketch plan. And the reason is because that whole process is optional. Strongly encouraged, but optional. And everything that's listed as recommended to submit is also optional.
Well, I understand aloud you that. I'm not sure why I made that question. So let's just take it off the table.
Okay, great.
Can I just make one comment about that though?
Yes.
It said, I'm reading it as tentative sketch plan submission requirements. Is there a reason why that says requirements then? I mean, it really shouldn't.
No, you're probably right.
It could be recommendations or it could just be submission period, nothing after it.
I think you're right, Heidi. That's better. And my understanding from previous conversations with all of you is that the goal of the tentative sketch plan process, we're moving in the direction of something like a charrette where we, you can have a conversation with the applicant about what they want to do and how it might work on the site and kind of raise any issues there, you know, maybe play with some of the ideas a little bit and talk about some of the options. And so it isn't, while there's certain things you might like to see, it isn't really important to have a specific set of materials. You'd really rather just that they come and talk to you, right? The, the most important thing is that they, they show up and have the conversation so that can get the ideas out there and raise some of the issues. So I guess it's written to try to, to try to make it as easy as possible while still providing some kind of guidance on what this process is, the tentative sketch plan.
Yeah, I would characterize it as, is there strongly encouraged to provide these materials to the extent they're necessary for the borough to understand the site and, you know, the, the ideas that they would like to explore. And they obviously can't ask to speak with us without having a site plan or like a map.
Something.
Some things you need. But I, but I think we should probably leave it to the discretion of the staff to say, well, okay, I think we can get this ball rolling with what we've got. And, and you know, last time we talked about things we might like to talk with them about, like that may actually be topics that come later down the road, like materials and things. So obviously we don't at this phase of the game, want to see their boards with their materials, but because it's a little too early to ask about that. But it doesn't stop us from saying, by the way, what materials are you thinking about?
Yeah.
You know, just to keep, put that topic into the conversation. So there's a difference between what we actually ask in the bring and then what we can talk about when we're there. So I would say sort of strongly suggests some basic things that will help us understand what's going on. It's super helpful to have, you know, like if it's a 20,000 square foot lot in zone three B to say, you know, so here's the lot here, you know, here's the impervious allowable, here's the building allow, you know what I mean? Like things like that that help us. But leave it up to the discretion of the staff to decide when there's enough on the table to have a conversation. That's, that's what I would suggest.
Yeah.
And the staff, I don't just mean Samantha and Michelle. I mean, there's Kevin. Kevin, by the way, I didn't say hello. Good evening to you. Thanks for joining us.
Absolutely. Good evening to you all.
There's Eric, you know, they can all weigh in on what they feel would be good to have on the table.
As an aside from that, Michelle has been asking me to review the tentative sketch applications as they come in. Similar to what you just said, in that I just want to skim over them from a footprint standpoint and make sure that their idea is plausible before it even gets any further. And that's what we're calling a complete application, you know, obviously besides the fee being submitted, that we're on the right track to present something that's capable of moving past, you know, my eyes.
Okay. Thanks. And that's it for sort of things to discuss in the plan processing or review section unless any of you have issues you'd like to bring up now. And as always, feel free to send me your comments anytime.
Nothing beyond what I've sent.
Thank you for your comments that you did send. And then in terms of the design section, this was drafted by my now former colleague, Aaron Holly. He just left the county at the end of the year. So stuck with just me, but he keeps leaving. I'm still here. And there is, this is definitely still a draft. There's some things that he marked in here, you know, maybe we want to consolidate this or edit this, but there's some work done in this that that has some changes from the way things are working now and a few, a few other things that I think are worth discussing. So I'll just bring up a couple of them. And then if you have things you want to bring up, let's do that. So the recreation land. So this is a draft that was circulated on really like last week, December 28th, the design standards. And Aaron didn't number the sections because he wasn't sure where we were starting. So they're all just labeled section 113 dash XX, which does not stand for 20. But the recreation lands section starts on page five. And really, this is a new thing for a Norberth borough to have, to require the dedication of recreation land or a fee in lieu that can be used towards improvements related to parks and recreation in the borough. This is something that's fairly common. It's pretty well solidified in state law and lots of municipalities do it. But the details are kind of up to us to work out. And one of the things here is do you want to try to require, what's the threshold for requiring some dedication of recreation land? And we discussed this at the staff level and put into the draft, three or more residential, new residential units that would require the dedication of some recreation land or fee in lieu. But that's really, could be anything. And this is really kind of a policy question that might want to go to council, but it obviously has to go here first. So thoughts on whether, whether a two lot.
Chloe?
National units or anything should require or something much larger? Yes, Todd.
Before you asked for our input, because this is something new, would you mind explaining a little bit more about the mechanism you're proposing?
Sure. I would be happy to do that.
And if you know where, like why it's in here now?
Right. I believe this was first raised by your new council president who heard about it somewhere, but other municipalities that I work with and that Eric works with, I know have this as well. There's, I'm actually not sure where the provision originated, although I can send a link if you're interested in learning more. That allows for, that would get back up for a second. Basic idea is that all residents need access to parks and recreation. And if you're adding residents, then they're going to be using your park facilities at least. And if you're adding residents, then they're going to be using your park facilities, at least, you know, in theory, some of them. And that the municipalities are legally authorized to try to recoup some funds to either acquire new parks and recreation facilities or keep up with additional maintenance on existing facilities from heavier use. And it was originally sort of thought of as, well, if a large subdivision occurs, like from a farm to 200 new houses, they should set aside part of that land as a recreation area for the people that live there so that those people have a park that's there for them to use. But it's been broadly applied in contexts similar to Narberth Borough, where it's most typically ends up being a fee in lieu of recreation land. So that the cost of a really small corner of the value of the property goes to the borough and the borough can use it for parks and recreation purposes. And it does, there is some accounting involved here. It has to be maintained in a separate fund. Or I'm not sure exactly the details. It has to be kept track of. The money can't just go into the general fund and be used for anything. But your borough staff will handle that. And that gives a funding stream for possible acquisitions of parkland or land to be preserved or more likely for recreation facilities, new playground equipment, maintenance and repair on ball fields, things like that. Could be used for that kind of thing. That's where that comes from.
Right. And this was, as I recall, an idea that did come through council. And the council asked the solicitor to look into it. And the solicitor had validated that this was a feasible policy and legislative option for the borough to consider. And so that, I assume, is why it's in here is because that's direction that's come from there. So I just thought everyone else should know that. Okay, so now with that little bit of background, can you restate?
The question is, what's the threshold? There are communities that say, you know, require some dedication of recreation land or a fee in lieu only if a new development has 10 or more residential units or only if it's over a certain size of land. So that's the question. Do you want to require it every time any new residential units are developed? That said, if it's a single family home on a single lot that doesn't go through subdivision and land development, this wouldn't apply. But any time it would go through here, you could require it. Or you could require it only if the development is a little bit larger, have a minimum number of units or a minimum acres that would sort of trigger this. Jim Spear?
Yeah, so I have, I guess, two questions. One is about, you were saying, single-family houses. In Narberth, we don't have single-family houses technically. We have detached houses and each detached house has a two-unit. Technically, any detached house in Narberth could be a two-unit development. So I'm not sure about putting the threshold at two there. I mean, if we're going to put it at two, we might as well put it at one for all, you know, for that reason. But I'd be against distinguishing between one and two units, if you know what I mean. So that's why I think three is probably a good number, unless we want to go to one. And my question, maybe this is, maybe this is just me, don't know the terminology, but does non-residential include mixed use?
A good question.
From my standpoint, anything that involves commercial uses is considered commercial.
But what about, this says non-residential, though, so.
Again, from my standpoint, anything that's more than two units is non-residential. But by nature, I'd be reviewing under the building code. So if you had three units, that'd be commercial in terms of how I'd be reviewing it.
Three units even in a residential zone?
Correct, in a single building, correct.
Okay.
Let's ask Chloe, though. Chloe, what's your understanding of the meaning as it is in this code?
My understanding is that this section related to recreation land dedication doesn't have to do with what the building code says, but has to do with how many residential units there are and then how many acres of non-residential development there are on the site. But I'm not the one that implements this after it's enacted. So maybe that conversation needs to be had further with Kevin or go ahead, Eric.
I'd say my experience here is recreational with various municipalities, recreation fee, recreational land, but more likely fee in lieu, you know, captures residential developments of a certain size, two, three, four, whatever that number is that you pick. And then also your non-residential, so your commercial, you know, other types of commercial properties and non-residential properties. Because directly they are adding people that are then going to be using services. So it's a certain level of, really, the only intention of this section is you want to capture fee in lieu from all development going on the borough, but you carve out those smaller projects where it's really at the minimus impact. So it just becomes more burdensome trying to go after like one lot. That's really kind of the threshold.
Chloe, if I, and Jim, if I may, I think to cut to the quick, Section C talks about residential and non-residential. But because we have mixed-use development as well, we should have a standard for mixed use. We should explain how a mixed-use property would be assessed this way. And not leave it to guesswork as to, is that residential or not, non-residential?
Makes sense. I'll think about that.
Yep, agree with that.
And that's where you're getting at, right?
Yes, it is. Thank you. That would clear it up. Can I ask one more question? I just thought of that this might, how would this apply to some of the other things, some of the infill ideas we're talking about where someone might develop, you know, a couple of cottages on a lot or, you know, or some small twins in a cottage or whatever, you know? Would that be? Would that fall into this neatly? I guess it would. Actually, I don't see any reason why not.
Chloe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I suspect as long as the development was more than however many units we set as a threshold, this section would pertain, right?
Yes, I think so.
Essentially, a subdivision of some sort. So by the way, I would echo Jim's opinion about the threshold being above two. That makes the most sense to me.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, Adam, you had a question?
I had a couple of questions and maybe an observation. So from a question standpoint, in the next section where it talks about the fee in lieu of land dedication or land provision, it seems like you would need almost permission from council to go down the fee route. Is that correct? You couldn't, it's not a by right option?
Right. Upon agreement of both Borough Council and the applicant, then the fee could be used instead. And I think that's required the way this is authorized in the state law, although your solicitor would be the one to confirm that. That both the applicant and the municipality have to be okay with the fee option in order to go to that.
I think generally that keeps the power in council's hands there to make that decision. So you want the recreational land, but if it's agreeable to all parties, council holding, you know, the ultimate control, then you can get the fee in lieu. That's a pretty standard. It has to be to the acceptance of, you know, the borough officials that they would accept that fee.
So Adam, if that were a choice point rather than a requirement of state law, is that something that would concern you or?
Well, I think it's related to the discussion of what size of development triggers a dedication because you end up with this sort of, you need to provide like 200 square feet of land. I mean, how are you going to do that? You know, so I just, I'm not sure I fully understand the mechanics of the, you know, how parcels would provide the space. And, you know, whereas it's relatively easier, it's an easier process to calculate. Like if you were to set aside 200 square feet or 800 square feet of land, you know, what's the assessed value of that land? And in terms of units, I know we're expressing it in terms of acres as well. So an acre is 43,560 square feet. So 2% of an acre is 871 square feet. I don't know what land's being assessed at right now, but every $10 would be $8,700 per acre. Anyway, yeah, I was curious about like, you know, if it's a fairly small threshold and on fairly small building lots, you're dealing with kind of small units of land. How is it actually going to work?
My understanding is that it is basically, as you said, it's a small amount of land and almost always everyone is agreeable to the fee. In a situation like Narberth, where we're talking about a few lot, one or two lots, three, you know, a small number of lots and it's infill development. And then some pretty modest sum of money is transferred to the borough for recreation purposes.
And I guess that's why I asked the question because council then always has the right not to agree to accept a fee in lieu of, so they were just pointing that out then. But if that's the requirement of the process under enabling legislation, then that's the way it is, I guess. So that's worth checking, I think.
Are you saying that? But, can you clarify for me?
An applicant could propose to go down the fee in lieu of dedication route. The borough could decline, if I'm reading this correctly.
That's correct.
And then so that's, you know, and then if the borough declines, then geometrically you have to figure out how to set aside a portion of the parcel for public use, recreation use, whatever the terminology would be. And you don't have to dedicate it, as I read it, right?
That's also correct.
You just have to make it available under the same terms as borough parkland, basically.
So, I mean, I guess if your feeling is that you would, the royal you, you, the planning commission, would always prefer the fee in lieu, that it makes sense for the borough to get a fee in lieu every time, then we should inquire with the solicitor as to whether there's a way to, whether it's possible to write it like that?
I wasn't recommending that, just to be clear.
Thank you for that clarification.
There's the unusual circumstance where we may not want that. Like with Three Elmwood, it might have been useful to have had public access along the stream. So let's not say that's going to happen a lot. But it may be useful to have that option. So I wouldn't necessarily, so in a way, I mean, it doesn't trouble me that the council has kind of its hand in the decision about whether it should be a fee in lieu or a dedication.
This looks like the Borough Council only has to agree if it's going to be a fee, right? And Borough Council can't insist that it not be a dedication. Is that correct? Like if I'm an applicant and I'm doing my development and I just insist on setting aside 200 square feet of my property, is that, can I do that regardless of what Borough Council wants?
You're saying if Borough Council would prefer the fee, but the applicant would prefer the land?
Right.
Then yes, I think so long as the land meets the requirements and the ordinance, they could do that.
I think that's troublesome. Let's say I have a piece of property that I want to develop and it's got an old, sick tree on it. And this is a situation that has actually occurred during my long and exciting life in Narberth. And I want, I don't want to be responsible for that tree because I know it's got some blight or other. And so I dedicate it to the town, to the borough for what is loosely termed recreational purposes. Let's say it's got a swing hanging from a branch. I don't think the borough wants that tree. I think the borough would rather have the 500 bucks. So it's a slippery slope.
Yeah, I would say the same thing even about just tiny little pieces of property that, you know, that maybe technically is applied as recreational, but are in fact way too small to be useful.
And in an awkward place.
Yeah.
What I could see happening is someone saying, well, you're requiring a tree lawn or a space between a sidewalk and the curb, that's going to be the recreation space. Go at it. So we'll wind up having people decide to fulfill their requirements simply by saying a space they're already creating.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems to me that except for the largest parcels, of which there are probably very few, the amount of land we're talking about is so insignificant that it's useless as recreational space. Am I missing something here? I mean.
No, I mean, I think, I think the goal of this in the context of Narberth would be to get some additional funds to support parks and recreation in the borough.
Right.
Primarily. And that in practice, that's mostly what I've seen happen is that the developer is glad to just pay a small fee and be done with this requirement. And the borough would probably prefer that as well.
Why isn't there just a recreation fee attached to the, to the application process?
Can I?
Which is just based on some percentage of something, I don't know what it is.
How about if it were the option of Borough Council? So in the case that Todd mentioned at Three Elmwood, where a pathway along the stream might have been a positive contribution to the welfare of the borough, the borough could have opted for that in lieu of a fee?
I think, I think we should, I want to hear what Jen had to contribute, but I think we should table this discussion until we just check in with your solicitor and make sure we're clear on exactly what the legal requirements are, whether we can have council require something or not. Jen, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to add something in regard to the utility of a recreation space. I think it's probably difficult to imagine exactly how this could be useful to the public, given it's like the fragmented nature of, you know, individual developers coming in and allocating a piece of, you know, something that we don't even know how much it is or where it is or that kind of thing. But all of that aside, I want to present another approach to understanding recreation space, especially now with Fred Bush, President of the Council. He has talked about an open space concept as supporting a a green, call it a green initiative. And, you know, if we want to cross-reference, say, like the Narberth Comprehensive Plan, which very strongly advocates for sustainable development, biodiversity, clean air, clean water, natural species, natural habitats, I think we could maybe start to imagine this concept of recreation space or open space. I think we could maybe start to imagine this concept of recreation space or open space or even call it green space as something that could support that type of um, value for the community, um, rather than a place where we can actually put ourselves and do something. Maybe some, it's just like a value space. Just.
So that might be a flower bed in the middle of a development.
Sure.
Well, it's like you were saying Chloe too before, this is really just a way for municipality to obtain funds towards a common goal. And I, I agree with Jen that the common goal should be green space or a broader term, not just recreation space. That is kind of, that, that's part of the borough, but really the comprehensive plan does indicate that we want to be more green and more sustainable. And it would be a really nice gesture, I think, for anyone developing their property to um, have it, it's a sort of tax that goes into a pot. It's like a 1% for art program where you have something that's for the common good.
Well, I think, I think we talked about this before. Other states have impact fees for this, but I guess maybe that's, it doesn't, correct? So we can't do impact fees, but this is, this is similar. It's site-specific. Three Elmwood did have a piece of land with the colored green on the map and like a little circular sidewalk, if you recall, at the corner. That was the gateway to Narberth. Um, this clause doesn't, I don't know that I read it as having a lot of control over the design process of the space. So, you know, it would, I, you could negotiate, but it's nothing that would compel the riparian access. That was, well, anyway, we'll see.
Right.
Well, it, and it does seem though that it's written backwards almost. It should be because most of the properties are small. There should be a fee. But if the properties are large enough and council agrees, then it could be something that could be developed as part of the development.
That's what I was going to suggest is that just reverse the requirement, just require the fee upfront, except when required by council or, or determined by council that, that a parcel of land makes sense.
Yeah. So Chloe, I think from that, there's like two really clear ideas. Um, one from Jen and one that Heidi and Jim uh, just crystallized. Um, and, and I think it kind of relates to one of the things I was saying. I, I mean, we all understand we can only maneuver within the boundaries of state law. And we also understand our state legislature is busier on far more important things than, you know, land use legislation. But um, a lot of this code sounds like it was written for another place. And I think that's what Jen and Heidi and Jim were sort of pointing out, like this seems like it's written backwards. Or it's not really talking about open space in terms of the values that we ascribe to open space in, in Narberth. And so I think to the extent that it's possible, given all the kind of realities we have to work in, um, these kinds of provisions, if, if they, if they feel like they're really addressing the way Narberth talks about itself, um, and, and its pattern and the kind of opportunities we have, I, I think, I think this is something that comes up repeatedly in the design. I know I made a lot of comments about this. I think that's the kind of feedback folks are uh, crystallizing around here. And I really appreciate folks staying at it to get to this point because I think it's a really good observation. I don't know what we can accomplish, given what the state allows us to do.
Right. It, it's different with different provisions in this ordinance. I think this one, there might be, you might be limited in terms of how you can adjust it, but we can definitely follow up with the solicitor and, and get his input on this, which I think is important in this case. And in some other aspects of the design ordinance, design standards, we can make more changes and we will.
Yeah. Um, but one of the things we should think about is if there's a, if we, if we hit like a barrier with state law, that doesn't stop us from saying, you know, staying a preference that we would like people to consider, even if it's not something we can require.
I was just thinking along those same lines, like that it could be worded still to be in compliance with state law, but adjusted to, you know, strongly recommend the root of a fee, if that's the, where we end up here. And there were varying opinions and I appreciated hearing that.
Or in the, in the design and location of recreation land, I mean, is there a way to kind of shoehorn in some of the things Jen was talking about?
Yeah, I, I think yes. In, in that section, that's design and location of recreation lands. I think you can kind of say whatever you want there.
Right.
And you can really find the type of facilities that you are looking for.
Pardon me?
Better define the types of facilities, facilities being could be green space. They could be gardens. They could be other pedestrian oriented spaces.
Okay. Well, I'd be eager to chew on that if I were a practicing planner.
You are a practicing planner, Todd. But I will chew on this one for you. How about that? We'll get back to it later. Um, I think we can, we could keep going with the design standards or we can look at this again next time. I know that not everyone had a chance to go through it because it only appeared in your inbox a few days ago. And I've also already received comments, but I have not, you know, gone through and made changes in this, in the design standards yet. So um, I'll leave it up to you if you want to just stop here or if other people have, you know, big issues they want to bring up for discussion now, we can do that. I do have more things I can bring up in the design standards, but I know you have more to do tonight as well.
Yeah, and uh, um, I guess what I would ask you Chloe is, um, if we are to come back to this at a future meeting, um, would, would you, would we just come back to the draft we have now? Or are you actively working on this draft as we, as time goes on? Like, would there be a new draft?
There'd be a new draft.
Okay. I think maybe unless anyone on the planning commission has a really pressing issue they feel they'd like to bring up, it might be better for you to consolidate what you've heard in the written comments and in the comments tonight. And then we can look at the next draft. That's what I'd propose. How does that sound to everyone else? Let's see a thumbs up. One of you, um, um, I won't say who just woke up. No, um, is that okay with everyone? Is there anything really pressing that? Okay, because I, I do want to make sure we can talk about the uh, some of the zoning issues too. If there's nothing else pressing, click. I guess that's how we'll leave it.
That sounds good to me.
Um, thanks for your efforts on this. Are you going to now have to carry the burden of both parts of this? The design and processing?
Yes.
Hmm. All right. Okay, well.
All comments to me. And I, and I am here, I give credit to Kevin Walsh and Eric Johnson and Michelle. Where's Michelle still here? Um, who've, we've been, been sharing interim drafts with them and getting comments and feedback. And they've been going through things too as well. So it's not just me.
Sure, I understand. And I should acknowledge them. And I know that the borough manager has made this a really high priority. So thanks for, everyone for pushing it along.
Yeah.
Um, all right. So with that, we will move on to our next agenda item. Um, which is some further tweaking of the um, zoning proposals for accessory dwelling units and infill development that we submitted to the staff, I should say, to the solicitor. Um, submitted counsel and then with counsel's blessing and staff's blessing, we've asked the solicitor to start drafting an ordinance. That's where things stand. Um, I did consult with the solicitor today, um, and he said that, um, based on the material we provided him last month, those sort of draft code drafts that we wrote up, um, he is still on track to providing a draft of a proposed ordinance to counsel in time for consideration at its January business meeting, which will be about two weeks from now. Um, he understands there are still a few loose ends to be tied up. And so he'll be waiting to hear from us about anything we discuss tonight and any further uh, direction that we give him. So, um, we set an aggressive course for ourselves months ago, and um, we're still on, on track for that. I don't, I don't know, um, um, what counsel's mindset is. Um, I encourage you all to take 15 minutes and listen to the discussion of this issue that occurred at the November business meeting. I did that yesterday. You can get a sense of what people are thinking. There's a lot of caution, I think, the borough council members have. Um, and I think we're going to have to do some work in explaining the proposals we're putting on the table and why we think they're important. I think we're going to have to be able to discuss, particularly with infill development, what we anticipate, the kind of scope of impact that it will have, you know? How, how many lots do we think could actually take advantage of these? Those seem to be the concerns that the council has. Um, um, be that as it may, we are, um, they've asked us, council directly asked, asked us and the solicitor to prepare zoning code for their consideration. And so we're on track, we're on track for that. Um, we had a few items left on the table from our last meeting, which I will quickly, quickly mention. Um, one was um, maximum size of a accessory dwelling unit. Um, one was the maximum um, building coverage in a planned development um, that has multiple buildings in it. Um, there was a question about whether there needs to be different roofs, roof slope for cottages. Table. Um, there were also a couple of questions that were submitted to us from Christiane. Submitted two emails to us. He had reviewed our proposals. Um, so we, you know, we take these as public comment and he asked us about some of the details and I forwarded all those to you uh, as well. Some came um, right around Christmas and some just came yesterday. I think all of you at least received them. So I think we should talk about some of the questions that Chris, that Chris has raised as well. See what our thoughts are. Um, so what I'd like to do is kind of go through these topics as quickly as we can. We're ready to sharpen our recommendations um, that in, in order for the, for the borough solicitor to incorporate those into the draft ordinance that he is writing. Um, the first topic was the um, maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit. And, and that is December 10th. Um, it's on page three. Um, the, the kind of summary of where we, where we landed on that. Um, the, where we landed was Jim had, Cornwell had done some useful kind of sketches of um, the conclusion was that a 600 square foot dwelling unit, if it were one story, was marginal. And if it were two stories, was not really feasible uh, because of the amount of space that we lost to stairs. Whereas 800 feet could potentially be slightly large as a maximum size, but would certainly be a better number. There was some conversation about whether the number should be lower than 800. And there was some conversation about whether there should be some mechanism linked to the size of the primary dwelling that would allow ADUs to be larger. Table, except for one thing, um, which is that I did a little cursory research, which means I Googled things on the internet and read up on some codes and researched on this topic. And I learned um, two things. Uh, one is um, the state of California, which has been most aggressive at um, uh, it actually requires municipalities to, to have in its code provisions for ADUs. It's done that for 30 years, actually. Um, um, the, the state of California's laws say that if a municipality is going to establish a maximum size, the maximum size can be no less than 1,200 square feet. Sort of interesting. That's bigger than what we're talking about. But that's California too, and it's a different context. Um, more uh, close to home, I found some research about Pittsburgh and Philadelphia. Um, Philadelphia uh, allows ADUs in certain circumstances. And Pittsburgh, at least in, in terms of what I was reading, was considering a limited experiment in ADUs um, in one part of the city. Um, interestingly, Philadelphia's um, provisions were linked to historic properties, which is kind of interesting. Um, but in both cases, um, both in Philadelphia's uh, code and in, in the proposal in Pittsburgh, uh, the maximum size of an ADU uh, would be 800 feet, which is coincidentally the number we were, we were looking at. Um, many of the other characteristics of their provisions are similar to what we're discussing. One ADU per lot, uh, ADUs uh, must be leased, uh, they, or, or if they're leased, they must be leased for less than, not less than 30 days. They can't be used as, you know, itinerant dwellings or, or Airbnbs, things like that. They're not subject to parking requirements, um, lot size requirements. Um, and there's a height limit in, in um, in Philly, it's actually 30 feet. So I think they are um, excuse me, in Pittsburgh, it's, it would be, it would be 30 feet. Um, which is sort of interesting. It reminds me of a Trinity, like they used to have in Philadelphia. So in a way, the metrics are very similar. Um, um, but both Philadelphia and Pittsburgh point in the direction of, of 800 feet. Um, the only other example I could find was Portland. Um, I believe Portland, Oregon, it was 800 feet or some percentage of the um, size of the primary unit, whichever was smaller. Not larger, but smaller. So based on that highly informal and random research, it seemed to me that 800 feet wasn't a bad number to land at, um, especially since it was a number that seemed suitable in Pittsburgh and, and Philadelphia. Um, so um, I guess what I'd like to ask is if we could reconsider 800 feet as a um, as a maximum and because we don't really, we haven't really done any other research that gives us a more, you know, specific way of justifying a different number. Um, and then, but, but we know it's a reasonable number because it seems to be applied in a number of diverse places, including cities nearby. That we, we try that out and um, see, see what comes in at 800 feet. Because I couldn't tell you why 800 would be better or worse than 825 or 775 or what have you. So what, does anyone have any thoughts about, about that? Sound?
I agree. I agree, Todd. Our own little gaming of this uh, that I worked on a couple of, a month ago suggested that 800 feet was a, was a reasonable number and that a reasonably comfortable little unit could be developed in 800 square feet. That's gross, gross floor area, by the way. That's out to out. We need to clarify our understanding of what floor area is. It's, it, it should be thought of as the uh, paint on the outside of the walls. Uh, not, not the uh, not the drywall on the inside of the walls. It's the, it's the complete footprint of the structure.
Which by the way, is the definition we currently have in our code.
Right.
Right. And I should say this would be the maximum size. So someone could certainly build something smaller. Like if they wanted to build a tiny house, they could build a tiny house. Any serious objections to trying that?
No, it sounds right to me.
Okay. And we can, we can see how applicants react, uh, but it doesn't sound unreasonable. Okay, so um, Heidi, the next issue on my list, and this is just sort of the list they came in in the minutes and in my notes from Christiane, was discussion of whether there needs to be a different roof slope. was discussion of whether there needs to be a different roof slope for the cottage. That's something that you, I refer to you because you brought that up. Do you have any further thoughts on that, that?
I thought my comment was about twins.
Okay. Well, then we'll make it about twins. That means we need to amend the minutes.
Um, I, I could be wrong. I could have said cottage at the time, but I think it had more to do with twins, just because there are examples of twins that have shallower roofs. And this goes back to the question of the building height for twins also. So I don't know if you want to talk, yeah, I don't know if you want to talk about that now, but they're, they're not mutually exclusive. But I think, you know, and I, it's similar to, I didn't even realize this was in the code about eight and 12 for roofs up above 30 feet or with ridge lines above 30 feet. And five and 12 for ridge lines below 30 feet. So it kind of follows that logic that twins that have a height of 22 feet could have a shallower slope. And that twins that are higher, 25 feet or whatever, could have a steeper slope roof or something. I mean, there may be something along that line.
Are you talking about the ridge line?
Well, see, that's the thing. It says ridge line in the code. It doesn't say, and it, it, that's, that's the code that's online, not the book that we have.
Right. Well, that would be the peak though, for, right.
The peak. Yeah, the, the hot, the top of the peak.
Just the highest point.
Right. Versus the midpoint.
Right. And the midpoint is what we commonly call the height. Let's, let's talk about the height. We had talked about 22 feet, but one of the questions that came from Chris Young was, could we consider 25 feet? And he is saying that because he's observed. There are many cases of of twins that where it seems like 25 feet is, is the height. I looked at the twins on Marion, for example, because I know he has an interest in Marion and it, it did seem like that many of them actually do have roofs that would measure out to be higher than 22 feet. I would say probably if you did a mean, it would be less than 25 feet in the borough, but 25 feet is not does not seem to be unreasonable or out of character, even in that area that he's thinking about. So I, I don't have myself a strong objection to changing that. So I guess let's start there. How do people feel about revisiting that? Because it, that's more of the comments we received is to reconsider that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I think 25 feet is very reasonable if you have a sloped roof.
Right.
I think it does not, the form is not as pleasing if it's a flat, flatter roof, but with 22 feet, it might be.
Okay. I, okay. So are there other thoughts?
I, I agree. 25 seems right. And I think in our previous discussion, we were talking about making sure that that 25 allows a third floor that perhaps we should look into some way to guarantee that that third floor is a, you know, a partial floor or a half floor, you know, or one that's under the eaves. And Todd, you and I had talked about maybe making a formula for that or something like that, you know, just to make sure that as, you know, as you get to your 25 and you're approaching your roof midpoint, that, that really the roof does close up at that point and, you know, and that, that third floor is less than a full floor.
Are there other thoughts about this?
I think the geometry would ensure that it was less than a full floor, Jim. If it has normal floor to floor heights. They're gonna have head dockers in a 25 foot midpoint roof, I think.
Because, well, Jim, Jim Cornwell, that would that would occur if we required the roof to be sloped, right? Cause if they had a 25 foot building with a flat roof, they could have three really squat floors.
Yeah, that are, that are illegally, that are illegally low. So you have a legal requirement that habitable spaces only portions of them can be below seven foot six.
Wow. How does it work if the first floor goes down a half story?
Well, now that is a whole new ballgame.
Right. So, so I think, I think the height works if.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a tricky thing to build. Most people wouldn't choose to build that.
I grew up in a house like that. It's a classic split level suburban design. I grew up in a lot of houses, not just the one, but that, it, it's a, you know, it's the typical, anyway, you, you, you enter at grade and the first level goes down five feet. And the second level goes up five feet. It's still, that, you know, usually it's a two-story form factor. It just puts the, the ground floor down half, a couple of feet into the ground.
I think at that point, it's no longer defined as a ground floor.
Yeah, it's true, Adam. We, what our metrics are for ground floor, I, I don't know offhand, but but I, I think the answer here is, I think Heidi had a, 25 feet is a good standard if if the, if we are able to say the roof should be, should be sloped. And that we should check and make sure the slopes that would be required are the ones that would be appropriate for the twin, twin house form.
But if the roof is not sloped, then a 25 foot maximum really cuts off a third floor, doesn't it? I mean, that's incredibly squished for.
It kind of depends on how we measure the first floor. Or it could be two really tall floors. I don't know.
Why not?
I think from the form, Heidi had it, which is that a 25 foot roof height works if it's sloped, because that's the form we know of a twin. I mean, no matter how big a twin is, we, we, almost all the twins we know have some kind of sloped roof. And the twins that are of this scale tend to have a sloped roof, sloped roof that allows for a third floor on part, not the whole floor plate of the building, but part of the floor plate of the building, because the roof is sloped and you so the third floor is smaller, right? That's the kind of form we know. So I think that where we're driving at is a 25 foot height is okay. 22 might be okay for a flat roof, but 24 would be okay, or 25 would be okay for sloped roof. A partial third floor. And that furthermore, Jim Cornwell is arguing that because of the nature of the slope, you're always going to have a third floor that's smaller than the second floor. And so you, or even second and first floors. And so you don't really need to have a metric for the third floor if you're assuming a sloped roof, right? So if that in concept is agreeable, Heidi, we'll have to, we, we could look at the math. We don't need to work the math out at the meeting. If we kind of agree that concept of a 25 foot root maximum height measured to the midpoint of the roof, if the roof is pitched or sloped, we need to check on what the metrics of the slope are and whether the code we have now would provide for the kinds of reforms we, we see in twins or think would be effective for twins.
Yeah, I think, I think we should go back and read the part of the code that talks about this and have it fit as another paragraph within it.
Right.
As it's a, it's sequential and the way that it's written is different than the way it's written in our original form code.
Right. So I'm just suggesting if we can kind of agree that that's the task at hand, we can, we can do that read through at some other point.
Yeah.
Heidi, we just have to have a phone call about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or does that sound okay to everybody? And then we could tell the solicitor what we come up with. Okay.
Yep.
So what will happen is a small group of us will kind of look at those metrics, ask the solicitor to include it in the code and it will come back to us to look at. So it will come back to us in a public meeting to look at what that really is. Building coverage is a tricky one. We did talk about that a little bit last month, but did not get to a, a resolution of it. This is covered in the minutes from last month on page four. Again, we're talking about infill development. We're talking about large lots in the historic district where a property owner is looking to add dwelling units. But is required to maintain an existing structure, an existing house. And therefore we're looking for mechanisms to provide site planning flexibility to allow for this to happen in the most advantageous way. The question then becomes if we allow for if we provide a, a kind of mechanism for a plan development where we have, where we allow more than one dwelling unit on a lot. Like a condominium approach. How do we evaluate the appropriate building coverage of that proposal? Our, our code right now allows for generous building coverage for a first, so many square feet of a lot, 2,000 or 4,000, 5,000, 7,000, depending on your zoning district. But for larger lots, very small percentage of that extra lot space can be used for building coverage. In this situation, it seems like we need to be more flexible. That's the, the proposition. Because really the option for the property owner simply to subdivide the lot, create new lots, allow them to get more building coverage. And so, and plus we're asking them, you know, to preserve, to preserve a building too, which complicates things. So the question is, what metric do we use to you know, evaluate the building coverage in one of these planned developments? This isn't the same as the number of units. I think we have a we have a way of evaluating that. It's just more about how much of the, of the lot should buildings cover? And I last month presented three three metrics. One is the old code, actually, the prior to the form base code had a flat 35% building coverage limit. In, in what we now call the 3A, 3B, 3C zones. The zones that covered those areas of the borough, the limit, the, the building coverage was 35%. So that number one seems to be an interesting metric to consider. We looked at a couple of developments that were developed under the old code, particularly Narberth Presbyterian, where there was the preservation of an old church and the infill of buildings around it, exactly the situation, you know, you know, we're, we're thinking about. And that came to about 30% lot coverage.
Just a point of order on that. Isn't the church like a really big building now? So it's small footprint, but maybe not. I just.
That's not a point of order. Point of order. That's not a point of order.
It's not a point of information. Cause I just, I'm just, you know, cause we, we had the whole, the whole discussion about the height limit and I don't think the church is 25 feet.
It's true. That is six units in it. Huge, huge units. But I'm just talking about, you're right, Adam. I, it's a tall and big building. And it has a basement that's used for parking. And then last month I distributed a chart that that had a revised formula that was sort of midway between allowing between the formula we have now for how much is allowed in building coverage midway between that and what would be allowed if you just took that base percentage for that zone and extrapolated it out for every lot. So like if you you know, if the original if, if in a particular zone, the base coverage was 55%. The formula was half of that, half the distance between that and then what you get when you, when you have a larger lot and a formula that has a smaller yield. So those are three, and those were three different, different ideas. So the question, I guess the question is really what, what feels right and what feels kind of clearest to you in terms of setting expectations? In terms of a metric we could use for someone who wanted to fill multiple buildings in an infill, an infill site. This is building coverage, by the way, not impervious. Impervious is the same in every zoning district. I think it's, it's pretty generous. I think it's 60%. Not the same in every zoning district. It's the same in 3A, 3B and 3C, I think. And it's pretty generous. It's 60%. So this is about building coverage. I'll say one more. Well, I don't know, Jim, did our research yield any insight into this?
Which, what question?
In terms of lot, remember we were looking at building coverages and lot sizes. I'm not sure our research yielded any insight into this.
Yeah. It's, we, we don't have accurate building coverage. Numbers, that's the, really the biggest stumbling block is like we were talking about in the previous month, we have those aerial photography estimates from the county. They are wildly off in many cases and they usually are far overestimate. So anything we're examining about, you know, which lots might be eligible for these in terms of having, having extra building coverage left to build on, those could be vast underestimates of the number of lots that could be eligible, just because, you know, some of these lots could actually the buildings could be 200 square feet less and they often are. But I would like to pursue more accurate building coverage statistics and maybe we can come up with something.
Later.
Later.
Yeah, I, I don't think our research yielded anything fruitful in that, in that regard.
Yeah.
So we don't have any new information to bring to bear. I mean, for the sake of argument, I would, I would just throw out that, that, oh, and, and I'll just say another reference point is the subdivision 146 Marion, which received tentative sketch plan approval was just around 40%. And I think we were all concerned about the amount of lot coverage there. So 40 feels a little high potentially. 30 felt pretty good. Cause if you go by the Elmwood, by the Presbyterian Church, 35 is what we used to have in the zoning code. So I think somewhere in there is the answer.
You mean the Methodist church?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I signed a clarifying.
I'm Catholic. Everything else is
The heathen church.
Pardon me?
The heathen church.
The place where the community theater was. That's what I like to think of it as. Many nice evenings spent there.
I, I find it interesting that our impervious coverage number is so high, but our building coverage number is so much lower. And I'm just wondering whether in fact the building coverage number could depend on massing also. You know, it obviously if you, you build five 35 foot high buildings, it's going to look a lot more compact or massive than five, 25 foot high buildings. And so I'm just wondering if there couldn't be some you know, that, some, you know, clarification or some instance, some, some way to adjust the code by form. I mean, I could imagine five little cottages on a, on a property being kind of nice, close together and forming a little community. Whereas that might not be the same with five big, single family homes.
In regard to your comment about impervious.
Yeah.
I think that's an issue. We, we did at one point thought we might look at that. I think it's a separate issue though. I, I do think it's an issue we need to look at. But I don't think that's something we can in assess in time for, for this next code revision.
I'm just, I'm just looking at it relative to this question though, because yes, maybe it's too high also.
Yeah.
Cause we should have more ground Because we should have more ground. Green space. Fuck.
What?
There's a child.
Hi, Jen, who do we have here?
He's curious and it's time. You have to go to bed now, say good night.
Night.
Good night.
That's interesting thought, I'm not sure how we would, how we could construct that. Are there other 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 opinions here about? Is there something that feels right that someone would like to suggest?
I think Heidi's comment was interesting.
Yeah, me too. If there was a way to measure that and quantify it, I think that's definitely worth thinking about.
Well, you know what? We did kind of do that. We were talking about gross square footage. So it could come down to that. The amount of gross square footage on a lot rather than and then however someone wants to divide it up.
Gross square footage, like floor livable floor area?
Livable floor area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know. What what's interesting about that is that's that gets us back out of form based. Code and into like a FAR based system.
Not really. I mean, you still have the form. It form requirements to follow.
Yeah, the two the two work together.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about kind of like, we are talking about a little overlay, like a sort of a code within a code kind of thing. So. I don't think it's necessarily a conflict to think about it that way.
Well, we do have that for cottage, right? Already because we do have a 2000, we have proposed a 2000 square foot maximum for cottage. You know, I think a challenge is. Each of these properties would have an existing house and there's no telling what. Would be right. So that's sort of an inherited inherited condition.
Which is fine. All right, I keep going back to this the Spanish house and how that was a big house on the lot. And we wanted to build a cluster of smaller homes. And I think we could have done that there.
Well, I guess what I'm wondering, though, is is. In this in this situation. In this infill situation, we're essentially. Permitting three different kinds of. Buildings, a twin. Which which we're allowing to have smaller metrics than. Twins we allow now. A cottage, which is a new type. Which is limited to 2000 square feet. And a detached house. Which is is a which is the same as the type that we allow now for detached house. So. Two of the one of those, the cottage already has and have would have an absolute size limit. The twins. Interesting. I guess I'm wondering, though, can we get at this without having like an overall? Gross square footage for the lot? I mean, I guess. It won't the other things we're talking about. Like the heights for the height for the cottage is already 22 feet. The height for the twin. Is going to be 25 feet with a sloped roof. Won't those won't those re in one of those requirements along with setbacks? Do enough to control? Control the form? Do we? Do we need something beyond, you know? Building coverage, building height? I'm not I'm not sure that the tools we already have aren't. Aren't good enough.
And we're talking about multiple houses on a lot, right? Multiple buildings on a single lot, not subdividing, yeah?
Right.
I guess I see what you're saying, Todd, that one thing is. You know, once. I think we've seen that. Well, one thing that happens when you go, when you go by building coverage and height. You know, immediately when a developer wants to cram it as much as possible, you know, they'll they'll pack it in however they can, you know, and be creative about it. But in a way, we're talking about floor area limits or floor area distributions. You know, we've cut to the chase. And there's no way around it. You know what I mean? Like, like you're building something that has this much or less, you know, so. I think I think there's I think there's merit to the floor area, or at least for exploration.
Yeah, I mean, you could use it, you could, we could look at an example of that. You know, say someone had a 10,000 square foot lot and you're going to allow 40%. Or whatever percentage it is, that's not 40, it's going to be higher than that floor area within the limitations of the forms that we allow.
Yeah, like is that would that be a floor area ratio that everybody people talk about? I know there's some municipalities that. Depend on a floor area ratio of lot size to.
Yeah, it would be, yeah. Yeah. Yep. And maybe it goes down with bigger lots. I mean, you're not not necessarily asking someone to take a two acre lot and use the same ratio.
If I could comment on the floor area ratio kind of idea. Were scary from my perspective. If you have. I mean, and have an unfinished basement and partial attic slash third story. And then down the line, they want to finish their basement and finish that attic or whatever that was and make it a livable space. That's really hard for us to track as a municipality. And I don't know if anyone will get wind of that. That'd be really hard for us.
I think in that case, we might want to exempt finished basements like we've been talking about for other things. You know, at other points of this discussion. We've talked about exempting finished basements as long as we're targeting that floor area. Appropriately, you know, with the above ground floors, as long as we keep the measurements consistent. And we might just expect that someone will finish their basement at some point and not mine.
And their attic.
Yep.
I agree, it's impossible for you, Kevin, to track that. Because it can't be seen. And a a. Habitable basement is pretty much a an oxymoron. Because there are a lot of reasons that. Other codes do not permit habitation of a basement. It's fine for a workshop or a rumpus room or. Other other uses, but not for not for what we consider living space. So let it let it roll. That's what Home Depot is for.
What, for finishing your basement?
Yeah, for doing an illegal improvement of your basement. So. Let it roll.
You mean the basement?
Yeah.
Yeah. Jim, I'd like to hear from other folks about whether you feel we we really need to add another metric across the board? Or whether building coverage in what we, I mean, whether the tools we have. Are good enough and we simply need to set a good building coverage requirement.
Well, the only reason that. I know, no, I know. I just want to just say, the only reason we're doing this is because we trying to keep from overbuilding the lot, which would happen if we simply go with the forms that we have.
I don't I don't know if that's if that's so. I I'm reluctant to add another metric myself. You know, my I sort of. Kind of intuitively think that we can, we can work with what we have.
But, you know, like it or not, I think we already are going with floor area for ADUs and maybe for cottages too. So I think we've already, we've already introduced another metric, you know, into town. And, you know, if it's going to be useful. In this instance, too, why not? Why not use it?
Think the purpose of it. For. Well, I'd rather, Dave, you charted, and I'm wondering if Jim or Adam or Jen has any thoughts about adding another metric? To help manage manage the. I, you know, the size of what's what's created.
Yeah, I mean. I think it needs to be drawn at its extremes. And tested that way. Is my hunch, I'm not very strongly saying. I'm just saying, in order for me to be conclusive about it, I would need to draw and see it. And understand it that way. I mean, I I don't feel like going into like the habitable space argument is. You know, you just you you add a fire escape to a sleeping room and it's habitable. You know, like if you want to add a window to your basement. So I don't know how you regulate that. I guess I'm I'm very wet behind the ears here. In terms of. You know. Being objective about the intention here, like, you know. Trying to control. Building coverage on a lot ultimately. Sorry.
Building coverage is is a metric we use in the form based code. It's one of the metrics we already use to. Manage the scale of what's what's built. So. The the challenge we have is. The code as it's written now allows one building on a lot. And so. It's easy to say for this type of building, this type of lot, here's. Here's the percentage of the lot you're allowed to cover. For the building.
Yeah.
But when we get into a situation where we are. Allowing more than one building on the lot. Which is what this proposal. Has been, it gets a little trickier because the metrics aren't really set up to allow that. Because of the way the formulas work. So. One way to look at is it's simply a mathematical question, which is what is the right math that gets you at a reasonable amount of building coverage? To to allow for infill development because the option would be. A property owner would simply subdivide, right? And if they subdivided, they would get to build a whole lot more.
Right.
Than they would.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that's that's true, only if they have enough land to subdivide.
Right, right. Which in the in the up until now, they would have enough land if they tore down their house. But we're not letting them tear down their house. And so the idea is. Because we've. Circumscribed one route to the property owner's use of their property. Can we provide another route to the use of their property? That would compensate them from the route we've precluded through the historic district ordinance. That's that's that is what we're. That's the kind of idea behind this, Jen, it's to. In the small number of circumstances where someone has a lot, where maybe in the past, they would have torn down their house and built two houses on it. Or in the case of some situations, we've seen they've torn off in addition to their house or a room of their house and subdivided. Which which is very hard to do now under because we have the the preservation, because we have the historic district. Is there a way to allow someone to add another structure to their property? And provide more flexibility for them to still add a structure to the property while keeping their historic property? How do we come up with the math that allows that? That's.
Yeah.
That's that's what.
That's where. Yeah. And the visual analog, it really would be helpful.
Okay. Jim Cornwell, do you have, and Adam, do you have any thoughts about this?
No, I think we've beat it to death tonight. I don't think I don't think a particularly useful conclusion has been reached, but I don't think it's going to get reached tonight.
Notwithstanding that, do you do you have a? Do you have any reactions to this idea that's been put on the table?
Not one that's worth sharing, I don't think.
All right, so we will have to table that.
I do agree, by the way, with Jen's comment. I think there's probably some more gaming that's in order of taking taking a look at. Using a couple of different metrics. That we could, you know, talk about at another time and place. And see how the different metrics yield. Results on the same lot. That would be kind of an interesting exercise.
I think then we should move on. I'm going to see if I can go through some of these other questions. Quickly. There was a again, I'm now going through the questions that Chris Young raised in his notes to us. In in this case, he is. Referring. Specifically to studies he's done of 146 Marion, where he notes that. Under the minute, under the. Our proposal for how much of a lot size you need to build different kinds of. Building types. If you were to try to build two cottages, two twins and retain one single family house. On that lot, you would you would. You would require. 15,600 square feet, whereas the lot's only 15,575 square feet. And so I think that's an example of a question, which is. Because we have so many peculiar lots and situations in Norbert. Is there is there a way to build? A little wiggle room into those metrics? So if something if 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 something is off by a few feet like this, we can still. Accommodate it. And I was going to suggest if if it's an idea that you like, there are two ways to do it. One is. One would be to reduce the. Required square footage for something like a twin by a small amount. The other might be to simply say. If. Once you've decided what building types you'd like to have. And you add it all up and you figure out what you need, if you're within like 1% or 2%. Of what you should have. That's okay. Like, you know, if you're if you're off by 25 feet. That we can still somehow accommodate that. To just sort of create. Create a little extra wiggle. to just sort of create create a little extra wiggle room. It's sort of like the situation where we faced, remember the guy who wanted to strip the bay window off his house because he needed like one foot? You know, if we could have simply said, yeah, you can, you know, we can give you a one foot grace or something like that, then we wouldn't have had to go through that whole procedure of adjusting the subdivision line. So I so I guess I'm wondering because there could be situations where the numbers just don't work in a kind of very de minimis way. Is there a way we can build in? And again, this is just for people who are doing these planned developments. It's a very few number, very small number of cases. Can we build in a little cushion of like 1% or something where we say if you if you're close but not quite, we can still we can still approve that subdivision or we can still approve that multi-building development?
I think that's very reasonable, Todd. The 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 issue of the bay window comes up in my mind fairly often, thinking about how the tail was wagging the dog. And if we'd had the flexibility to 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 make a generous gesture, we would have saved everyone a lot of trouble. And the result would have been probably better. So I would vote for that idea. It should be discretionary on the part of the planning commission or the council to to grant such a relief. Of course. So we really don't want developers counting on that 1% or 2% or 1.5 or some number like that, some small number. But that seems that seems quite reasonable to me.
I agree. I I just wanted to ask, does zoning hearing board, do they ever hear a de minimis argument, you know, do they do they ever do they take arguments like that and grant them?
It would have to be a variance.
You never see it. I've never seen it.
It was well before my time. I think it was 2011. And they they granted a sign at the Royal Bank for being de minimis. And I think it was like a foot off of a 300 square foot allowable, but never in terms of a structure.
Well, that's because of the path that's been written. I mean, they would have to ask for variance, right? And a variance you don't get if you caused the problem yourself. So I can see why they wouldn't do that. This could be construed constructed. I mean, if you if it's an idea you like, there we could talk to the solicitor about how to construct it. I mean, there may be a way to do it. I would hope there'd be a way to simply do it in the zoning code. I'm certain there'd be a way to do it as a special exception, which, as you know, is not a very difficult thing to obtain. If you meet, you know, it's a pretty straightforward thing. If you meet certain circumstances, you can. So I think we could work out the mechanism. The question is whether this is an area where we should try to have a mechanism that provides a little bit of of wiggle room. And so a few people have spoken and spoke of that. Are there any other thoughts about this?
I agree to a special exception, and it's just a matter of what that is. You know, what the what would allow that?
I think we'd have to talk to the solicitor about the best way to pursue this. I'm not sure what that is.
If it's something that benefits the community, we can go back to that recreation space.
Well, I want to get back to the basic point here is the community is already getting a benefit because the house is being preserved, which for some people comes at a cost. And so what we're trying to do is ameliorate the burden that requirement places on some people. Right? Some people have lots where you can't build anything else. And so not a big deal as much that you can't tear down your house. But if people have a big lot and they could have torn down their house and built something different, then that is a big, you know, a big deal. And so we do get a community, I want to stress, we're already getting a community benefit, which is the preservation of the house. It's not like we're not already benefiting from the from the situation. It's just a matter of how much flexibility do we want to provide to someone who would still like to make productive use of their property?
We can code it. I think we should have the wiggle room. Sounds good to me.
Okay, I like that answer. Sounds like that's and we just have to ask the solicitor about that.
And I wonder if the term is de minimis, if you can sort of deem it compliant if it's within a tolerance.
Right, that's the idea. Going on Chris's list. You did ask whether some additional floor area can be permitted for cottages, but at least confirm what appears to be intended, namely spaces like finished basements, garages and porches would not count to the maximum floor area. I think for cottages, that that would be true. I don't think we intended for basements, garages or porches to count to the gross floor area. That's if you read our code now, our definition of gross, I think it's gross building area, does not include those things. So I don't I don't think we were intending anything different. You know, Jim and Jim Spear and I looked at cottages the other day. We looked at a lot of buildings and areas that we really liked. And what we learned was, and we compared it to the data that we could find about the square footage in those buildings. And I think what we found is the vast majority were 2,000 square feet or less. And those that were more than 2,000 square feet were really like 2,100 square feet. So we because we were looking to see whether 2,000 was arbitrary or how that really stacked up against the kind of houses we would look at. So yeah, that's a great a great cottage. It's and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've wound up feeling pretty comfortable that a 2,000 square foot limit for a cottage is is pretty representative of that type of building which exists in Norbert. And so I don't think we felt that there was a pressing need to reevaluate that. Jim, how does that score? Your recollection of our.
Yeah, that's the way I remember it going. 2,000 seems reasonable. 2,000 would cover a lot of what we like.
Yeah. And then today, I asked Dave Brower to look at since a cottage could be built on, I think, a lot up to 40 feet wide. We looked at a minimum sized cottage lot of 3,000 square feet, which is the smallest lot you can build a cottage on. And we looked at lot widths of 30, 35 and 40 feet to see how big of a cottage that would yield on those lots. And I think what we came up with is what, Dave, about 1,900?
Yeah, it was just, I think, from 1,800 to to just under 2,000 square feet.
So even on the smallest lot possible, it you can almost get the biggest cottage possible, not quite, but close. So I think we were pretty comfortable that those metrics were fair. I think I think, Dave, on the third, I think it was, I guess I'd have to look at your notes, but I think it was actually more than 1,800. I thought it was like more like 1,875 or something.
Let me see if I can find this sketch real fast.
Anyway, we tried to check those metrics and it seemed if you had the smallest lot possible to build a cottage on, you could almost barely build the biggest cottage allowable. So it felt like it wasn't unfair. Those those numbers seem to jump. Let's see, Dave's going to check those numbers.
Yeah, and the three and the three examples I did, it went from 1,820 square feet to 1,920 square feet.
Right.
Depending on the the width of the lot, the proportion and some assumptions I made about front yard setbacks.
And that was for that was for a two story.
That was for a two story.
Yeah, so. Okay.
And you had we had lot coverage of those from 30.3% to 32%.
That argues for the mid 30s again.
Yeah.
Okay. A couple of other comments from Chris and going back to his earlier email. We have a proposal that we agreed on, which is that in terms of calculating the parking in these kinds of situations, the parking credits that that you would be allowed. If you were to take one of these larger lots as a whole and calculate the parking credits, the on-street parking credits that would be generated and then subdivide the lot, you might find that you don't get an efficient the widths don't work to the to the to allow for kind of an efficient breakdown of those parking credits. Like, for example, you might have the lot originally might be large enough to provide two parking credits. But when you subdivide it because of the the widths of the lot, you might wind up with only one parking credit because one of the lots is just too narrow. So what we proposed and agreed to and sent off to the solicitor is that you could calculate, if you wanted to, you could calculate your parking credits before you subdivided and use all those parking credits after you subdivided so that someone is not disadvantaged by subdividing one of these lots. Again, just a little a little bit of flexibility to help out people who are being required now not to tear down their houses. The part of that derives from the notion that since people are required to preserve a house, they don't always get to draw draw the subdivision lines where they might be most efficient for any other reason, because they have to maintain setbacks and, you know, around the existing house. Chris's question was could could that could somebody calculate it both ways, either before before the lot was subdivided or after the lot was subdivided and take whatever answer was more advantageous? He also asked, would we consider eliminating the two-space cap? Which right now, if you're subdividing a lot, excuse me, if you if you have a lot and you have one structure on it, depending on the nature of the structure, you can have one to five units. If it's a sing, if it's a if it's a multiple, if it's a detached house, it could have one or two units. If it's a multifamily house, it could have two to five units. So we have a maximum parking credit of two, no matter how big your lot is. So his question is, could would we consider changing that cap so that if your lot were big enough, say, to allow for three on-street parking spaces, you could you could take those three those three spaces? And I think the thinking here is is that that would provide for more site planning flexibility by reducing the amount of space in a lot that you'd have to devote to parking. So I think the the issue here is how much it gets back to the general issue of how much parking should we require off-street and how much are we prepared to accept on-street? And in this case, can can we provide a flexibility that allows for more on-street parking to be counted towards the parking for the housing? Hope I explained that clearly. So any thoughts about that?
Parking flexibility is always a good thing.
Yep, ditto.
I would say minimizing the amount of land used for parking is a good thing.
And also, since this is a situation where, you know, the object is to keep, you know, it's to fit things on a previous single lot, there's not a lot of, it's not a lot of option to consider, like, you know, how many how many on-street parking spaces you will, your plan will yield, so. Yeah, this makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, we're not allowing more than one parking spot. You know, we're not allowing in theory any more parking that's already allowed. What we're trying to do is eliminate the quirks of subdivision. So I'm comfortable with it. Okay. An interesting question Chris raised is, how do we, this gets to ADUs? How do we determine, you know, building height of any structure is calculated between, you know, the ground, the the base of the building or the the there's a there's a kind of datum from which the height is measured from the bottom to the top. The top is to the middle of the roof. The bottom is determined by a formula. In these residential zones where ADUs would be created because of zoning changes we introduced a year ago, the height of a building is measured by the average grade at the perimeter of the lot, which is okay if you're planning for one house on a lot or, you know, buildings, but it may not be okay for an ADU because an ADU would likely be kind of tucked off to one corner of a lot. And and since our datum for the height of that ADU would, under the code as it is now, be the whole perimeter of the lot, that might cause some quirks depending on how the lot lies and what the, you know, the average elevation is. And so what I would propose is that for ADUs, if you're building a new ADU, we go back to the old definition that the height of the bottom, the the base of an ADU is measured from the pre-development grade of that part of the lot. And that becomes the bottom, which is now, which is the old datum for residential neighborhoods and remains the datum for commercial districts for 5A and 5B. So I would propose for ADUs, the height of an ADU be measured from the bottom of it be measured from the average grade of the land where the new structure sits and the average grade in a pre-development state of the land where the new structure sits. With how we measure things in other parts of the ground. Other? Any other thoughts? Adam said it made sense.
Yes, it makes sense. I think it's it's a it's a natural thing to do. I mean, otherwise, I mean, I think it heads off wacky result, potentially wacky results, you know? So, yeah.
I think that pretty much covers. Another question here, I guess this is the last question for us to talk about. And then there's one other point I think we need to defer. But the other question is, in the in the note we received last year, Chris asked, would we consider, for the same reasons we would consider a slightly higher roof maximum height for a twin, would we also consider that for a cottage? Would we consider a 25-foot height for for cottage, which would again allow for two stories and a third? a 25-foot height for, for a cottage, which would again allow for two stories and a third, potentially a third story to be tucked underneath, again, not changing the 2,000 square foot maximum?
That's interesting. So I mean, that's essentially just allowing a smaller building footprint to yield, to yield the same amount of floor space, right? By providing a little bit of floor space on a third floor.
I can't see why that wouldn't be desirable because you lose so much square footage. You think you lose so much space to stairs, but I believe that was the question.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think, I think that facilitates smaller building footprint. Since we're already regulating, this is one of the few things we are actually regulating by floor area. So.
Not sure you lose as much area stairs. You lose it on the next story up, but on the second story, you already have a cutout for stairs. So if you stack your stairs, anyway, it's not a big deal.
Okay. Maybe, maybe we would work on the same rules about pitched roof as we would for a twin in that situation. So we don't have 25-foot buildings with flat roofs.
Yeah, let's not do that. They tried that in San Gimignano, which is where this, where this zoning regulation originated, you know?
Well, personally, I want to see more turrets. Four, four or five stories.
We have some very nice turrets in Norbert, and I think we would all love to see more. Chris also asked about a concept, which I don't quite understand. So I think we need to follow up with him about it and get some clarification, which is something he calls a lot averaging approach. You can read about it in your email, which would allow the same density for allotted-out development as would be permitted if the identical development could be accomplished by the creation of a condominium. I think what he's, what he's trying to do is introduce an idea that would allow for some variations in lot sizes. If, if that allows, remember how we, I was talking about, we might allow for some de minimis variations on the overall aggregate lot size. I think he's also wondering, can there be flexibility with the sizes of individual lots too, if, if a line doesn't quite meet a requirement? I, I think that's something we have to learn more about and look at. It may be something that Chloe, you can give us a little information on. Apparently, this might be a approach to site planning that is more typical in, in kind of places where they get larger subdivisions. And you might be able to help us think through whether this is an idea that has value to us in our kind of unusual circumstances. So I think that's something we'll just need to explore further before, before we finish this up.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I'm a little laggard. But going back to the Chris Young's request for three parking spaces on-street. I just wanted to maybe entertain the idea of, I saw that there's an electric filling station here in town, and that's fantastic. And I wonder if we could make special exceptions for people like, say, yeah, sure, you can have three on-street car, you know, spaces. If one car is an electric car of those three, or something like that. You know, cars do create the heat island effect, which contributes to, yeah, environmental effects. And I just wonder if there's any room to sort of figure that into some of these equations.
Chloe, do you know of any examples where, I know we do that. We've requested that, Jen, and have been able to obtain those commitments for larger developments, like the one at 114 Forest and the one at 650 Montgomery? Because those are larger developments where, you know, there might be 20, 40, 50 housing units. And so you know, there's a lot of parking. And so setting some off for that purpose would make sense. Chloe, do you know of examples of municipalities that have established EV parking standards at this small scale? I think the scale is the question of whether it works at the scale. Do you, do you know of any, Chloe, any examples?
Well, I will say Philadelphia had a program for a while that allowed a property owner to install an electric vehicle charging station at the curb line if they showed that they owned an electric vehicle. And they repealed that program because people were using it basically to try to reserve parking spots in areas where it's difficult to park.
Sounds like Philadelphia.
You put a charging station at the curb, it's not really yours, right? That's the public right of way. And it gets into kind of a tricky situation. Not that it's bad to have them there, but it's, it's not ideal to have a private property owner install it because then they feel like they own that parking spot.
To follow up on that, Chloe, we're actually, we have a meeting with that this week. Samantha, John and I had just discussed that. They're kicking that to the, I don't remember the name of the commission, that they're kicking that to. But that, that specific example's coming up now where, well, what if the homeowner installs the, the charger at the curb line? Again, they think that's their spot. Well, how are we going to regulate whether or not somebody else with an electric vehicle is going to that station as their own? And ultimately, the homeowner is going to have to pay for that. So are they going to take that risk paying for other people to charge a vehicle? And that's their technical fee for reserving that space? But we should have an idea. I think they meet, I think on the 6th. So if you want to follow up with the results of that conversation, we should have a better idea where the borough is going with that in the next week.
So I, I take it, my take on that is probably there needs to be a more kind of comprehensive thinking about EV parking on residential streets, if it's feasible at all, what circumstances. There's more to, and it may not be right to try to figure it out. It may be better to have a global borough solution rather than to try to figure it out for the purposes of this amendment.
And to Jen's suggestion of, well, you can have, you can count three curb parking spaces if you know that one of the occupants of the future homes is going to have an electric car. It's not practical to dictate at this point what someone who might live there in the future is going to own. And people always move. So that's, installing a charging station, I think, is worth having the conversation about, but not, I don't think this is the, the group to solve that one.
Actually, on the agenda tomorrow night for the Public Health and Safety Committee is EV chargers for residential streets. So tomorrow night, they'll be talking about it.
Yeah, right. I think it's a better venue for this conversation.
Good. I have a lot, I have a lot to say about this, so I'll be there.
I would love, I'm not going to be there, but I'm, I'm interested in this conversation as well because it's an issue everywhere.
What's, what's, I mean, what's really unanswerable is how much the marketplace will, will affect the decisions. I mean, in five years, the whole situation is going to be very different in terms of the prevalence of electric vehicles than it is now. So.
Yeah, but see, the problem is, I don't think the market's going to solve this problem. We're going to have to solve it. It's an infrastructure issue. In suburbs where everyone parks on their own property, the homeowner can juice up their EV. But in communities where the majority of vehicles are parked at the curb, then we're going to need ultimately probably a charging port at almost every parking space. Because no one of these cars don't move, right?
Folks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask this conversation be table till tomorrow night. It's not a planning commission conversation. And I, for one, am really thrilled to be able to finish a meeting before 9:30. If it's okay with you, we can continue after we adjourn the meeting. That really goes through all the comments. Just to repeat, I think there's one item we need to follow up with quickly that has to do with the height and roof slopes. I'm not sure what to do about the metrics for building coverage yet. I'll have to think about how we can kind of move forward, even though we don't have clear direction yet. I know, I know there was a request that we actually do some sketch studies of that. So I have to think about how we can move that along. But what I'd like to do is kind of consolidate everything, all the guidance we've got and pass it on to the listener and see how close we are to the language that he wants to give to council. So thanks for your, your hard, your hard work on this. I might be tapping on your shoulders over the next few days to help hone a few of the points that we still need to hone. And whatever, wherever we are, we'll bring it back to a public meeting next month. So you don't have to feel like things are moving along without, you know, your opportunity to have input. With that, I will ask, if it's okay with you, close this topic and move on to public comment. If anyone from the public is still with us, Joe's here, Ira's here. Would anyone like, would either of you like to comment on any matters before us or other planning matters? Okay. Hearing no comments. I'll thank you all for your attendance tonight and participation. And just hope that all of you and your families and your friends stay safe in these kind of fast-paced, changing times. And, and, and again, thanks for her, your work and helping us get to the point, this point with these, with these topics. So we'll see you all soon. Thanks very much. Oh, we need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we have to adjourn.
I hope we adjourn.
I don't think we can do that. We don't, can make a motion because we're, this is not a
We, we're not doing official business here. So we, we will make a motion to, to, to adjourn. That's not as official as the other thing. Second to adjourn.
I second.
Okay. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Thanks very, very much.
Thank you.